United States of America and to their public.
And vote on them. Talk about the ECAT contract.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. It's a party in here. Look at this. Oh, Neil.
Hey.
I have to be in Michigan.
Hey, man. Hi.
I don't know about. All right, so we can table the minutes until Jackie gets here. Do we have a payroll warrant over there?
Yes, we do. It has them right there.
Okay. Now, the first one is a payroll warrant. PD fourteen dash thirty-nine A and an amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Do you have a motion?
Can I sign it?
Can Liz sign?
Everybody can sign. Is that, wait, is that the first one?
Yeah, it's the first one.
Seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one.
No, no, it's one thirty-four.
Oh, I don't have. Then Jackie, can I sign?
So we're, so we're on this one here now. Is that it? No.
Whatever the school one is, I can't sign that one.
Heather, do you know, this is the one hundred and thirty-four thousand, one, one, can everyone sign this?
So the school warrant one is the one for one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. It is payroll warrant fourteen forty-one one. So that one, everyone but Liz can sign.
Well, hang on for a second, Kato. So we got, we already sort of talked about PD fourteen thirty-nine A. Where does that leave us? Who can sign that?
Yes.
This one here. This one.
Okay.
What's the date on it?
Oh, that's, you know what? It's a payroll deduction one. One of them.
One hundred and thirty-four thousand.
It's fine with that guy, yes.
All right.
Ah, okay.
Hey, Jackie.
Payroll deduction.
Can you take?
Looks like it's just teachers' dues, so that one, everyone should be able to sign.
Oh, okay.
Everyone can sign that one?
Yeah, it's just teachers' dues.
Okay.
The PD is payroll deduction.
Okay.
Yeah, already did. So I'm just, yeah, so moved. So moved.
Second.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, PD fourteen forty-one. Heather, everyone can sign this one? Seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
Let me just pull it up on my iPad here.
Thank you. I'm just going through the way they are in this.
Yeah, the PD warrants are gonna be for federal tax withholdings.
Okay.
And that kind of stuff. Retirement and everything, so it shouldn't matter.
Shouldn't matter who signs. Okay. So do we have a motion for PD fourteen forty-one's for seventy-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents?
Make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. How about PD fourteen dash, uh, fourteen dash forty-one dash one, one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents? Do you have a second?
Second. Is that the school one? Usually the biggest number.
School lunch is right on there.
Okay, abstain.
So you abstains. So those in favor? You abstain. Okay. Uh, PD fourteen forty-one dash two and seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety cents. Winter road, dog control, water siphon tenant, and water wages and transfer station.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Jackie, you're not gonna be able to do this one. This is PD fourteen forty-one dash three, three hundred and forty-two dollars, and it revolves around plumbing inspections. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Jackie abstain. Next one is PD fourteen dash forty-one and an amount of forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and three cents. And this is withholdings, I guess. So I guess everybody can motion this. Do you have a second? Those in favor? Motion is approved. Thank you. And the last but not least is PD fourteen dash thirty-nine and an amount of forty-one thousand, thirty-one dollars and two cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have, we're talking about the ECAT.
Uh, yes, but actually, there's a couple folks who are here for the emergency management. They were wondering if it's possible to take that item out of order.
All righty. Where are we on that?
I believe Ed has an update for us since he currently holds a position of emergency management manager.
Okay. So we're discussing how to appoint the next person to be?
Yes.
Is it a chairperson or director?
Yeah, it's the director. Uh, what we've had in the past was, um, uh, emergency manager director with two assistants. Each department head, well, when I was assistant, the fire chief and the police chief were the deputies to fill in if I wasn't here and also to augment material, manpower, and, uh, vehicles to events that might happen. The board asked me if I was gonna continue this after my appointment. I said no. So there is a, it's gonna be a void in May. The board will act on, on that. There are some paper documents out there that are probably six or seven years old. Those documents are not updated because they don't use paper anymore for the last seven or eight years. Everything's on this form. And, um, once a year, I meet with Bonnie from MEMA and also people from FEMA, and we go over changing in, um, equipment to, um, inventories that we have that can be attributed to it, uh, kind of staff, kind of, um, material each department has in an emergency, what can be moved to another community. Update the change in personnel to have proper names for chiefs and that when they change or department heads when they change that are affected. I go, I went to probably four or five meetings a year that were unrelated to events. Event related, uh, when I say event related, like hurricanes, snowstorms, and stuff like that, requires two and three meetings with FEMA and MEMA to coordinate, um, um, cost factors. Number one cost factor is your, the initial investment at the town would put into an event if a so-called declared emergency were established. And then the emergency comes from the governor, but then it's approved by the federal government, namely the president. And then, once that's done, after the primary, you know, evaluation of costs are done, we do an in-depth cost factor. And that's usually, um, most of the events like that have been for major snow forms, storms, and, um, it's pretty straightforward, but we've had several, um, events where we had washouts. We lost roads. We lost, um, a lot of damaged trees. We had roadblocks. We had down wires. That's constitution, constitutes another set of, um, particulars that you would have to deal with. Short-term recovery and then also long-term recovery. And you'll also deal with mitigation. When I say mitigation, things that have been a constant problem that if we did mitigation, uh, we could probably hope eliminate those when another event happens, such as, um, change the way drainage comes into a roadway, change the way maybe a building is, um, taking in water, you know, flooding easily. Some of the other things that in mitigation that we've dealt with in the past is move the electrical systems out of the basement onto the second floor. So unprone areas that were subject to flooding, they, um, wouldn't worry about getting electrocuted when people go into buildings. You meet with them probably every four or five years also to go over a master plan of townwide, um, changes, such as where, where are your major forest fires, uh, where are your water supplies, uh, your dams, have they been checked and approved, what kind of conditions they are in, uh, what areas are prone to overflowing and stuff like that. So that's what I have done over the year on an annual basis. And, um, I know there's Don Snyder and, and the ex-chief of the police depart, fire department and the current chief are here, and, uh, I'm assuming the three guys are interested in taking that position. No? Or had questions, be my guess.
Yeah, just interested in supporting the board and whatever action we're looking to take.
Okay. It's a non-paying position, so we'll put that up front.
It would be good to get a copy of where it's from.
Well, I did give the disk to each police chief and fire chief in years past, but I got, there's disk over my office and we can burn some more disk. And if I can't burn them because of the way the copyrights are on, I'll ask FEMA to get out some more. Okay.
So Ed, what do you think about, do we post this position? Do we?
Well, I think we should post and find out who's interested in it. I personally, and it's no offense against Don, I, I found it that, um, the department head has more flexibility to move manpower, equipment, and, and supplies in faster than somebody who has to go to these people to get the supplies in there. That's, uh, the only benefit I could see that when I was there, I, you know, we had, uh, the ability to move highway personnel, heavy equipment, police department, and fire department personnel and work with board of health members to move all these things in. And, um, one thing I also did, um, was, um, I'm a level four hundred. I think there's one more level above that, uh, but, um, and that's in, um, I P S, uh, yeah. Um, and, but another thing I, I did, when I know there was an event coming, when I say event, something like a storm, floods, or high winds are happening, we would meet if it was something out of the ordinary that we knew we were gonna get hit hard. We would meet here, all the departments would meet here, and I would go over any new rules and regulations in regards to how, was replaced if it was damaged, lost. Check on manpower that was available and just do a genus, uh, a, a pre-check of what was going on. We would meet periodically, um, on the radio for the most part unless there was something that dictated us to come in. Um, in the last major event, um, when we had a lot of streetwise damage, we would meet here, I think, every two days until we saw some kind of assistance coming in and, um, improving our situation where we could see recovery. And that was something we worked on and did. And I think, we didn't do it perfectly, but I think we, we did a good job at getting a hold of our resources and moving them. One thing I can say in any event, whatever it is, you're on your own for twenty-four to forty-eight hours, and I think anybody who knows emergency management, that's a given. Then you start getting resources in from MEMA and FEMA like we did two and three days down the road. So, um, you gotta prioritize what you have to do, protect your water supplies, and, um, make sure that we have the ability to have a shelter. I mean, one thing we do have, we have three designated areas for shelters for various sizes in town. Uh, we have one small room that's over the, that used to be the old selectmen's room for under forty people. Or maybe if we're just gonna feed our own personnel, we would operate, set that up and operate that. If we knew we were gonna have something that was a more definitive and needed, um, larger facility, we have the ability to go to the church, which is a designated area, and also the main room in the council on aging with the overflow in here. Those are on paper and those are designated areas. Uh, they don't get activated because FEMA and MEMA have done, um, things a little further with Red Cross, and Red Cross, um, will come into designated sites that are designated by MEMA and FEMA, and they like regional sites. Case in point, uh, there was once, we didn't have one per se, but we had places open up where people could charge their batteries, get drinking water and stuff like that. Um, we, that last major event, we had probably eight or ten calls that came in for, uh, possibility of going to shelters. There was a major shelter for animals set up in Westfield. There was a, a, a shelter set up at a church in East Hampton. The one in East Hampton was not a regional, it was done by East Hampton, uh, so they buried the cost. But, uh, and the one in Northampton was set up for the hill towns in Southampton, East Hampton, and Northampton. And that was set up probably two days into the event. Okay? And, uh, that was run and operated by the American Red Cross. And that's what we did. That's what we coordinated.
What day do you stop being the? And is, does it need to be?
Do they have my replacement?
When there's a replacement.
I believe it's sometime mid-May.
So would the, the board's pleasure be to post this position?
How did, do you post it and then people like write a letter that they're interested in?
Yep.
It goes through us? Is that how that happens? So we should probably do that then.
Yep.
Do I have a motion for that? Is that a motion? Motion?
Yeah, I make a motion to, to post the position.
Any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, there's a, do you have a, Ed, do you have a detailed job description in a more concise book you were just telling?
Nope, there was never one. They were appointed and given, um.
There's no minimum requirements, like?
Well, I believe there should be some, well, there are minimum requirements, but when I was given the job, nobody else wanted it, so it increased to that. Before that, we had an ex-fire chief, I think. Miles, was he a fire chief? Was he the fire chief? Yeah, he was, he ran the little house next to the firehouse that was driven through by a car and demolished.
Do, um, Dad, do you think you could poke around and find a job description from MEMA?
We can find, I can put some job description there with minimum requirements.
Work with Heather and draw that up and then get a place.
I think the people are gonna be interested and have a lot of these, um, criteria already established. They're all pretty much first responders criteria.
Do you have experience with a SARA chief?
I have some experience with it. Um, I have some experience with it. Yeah, it, I think it's, understanding, you just know we're gonna have more of these type of events that are gonna happen, you know, so that it's career. I think that it, you know, it, it needs a fair amount of, uh, you know, time and energy put into it.
Right.
And it's a challenge because there's a, a lot that you really can do with it, as much as you kind of wanna give it. Uh, and, you know, certainly, uh, here we have saying about, you know, department head and that, you know, that, I understand that, uh, but I'm not adverse to, you know, I mean, I just, you know, in some of the talks with like Don and stuff, I'm not adverse to, you know, seeing that go outside just because if someone's really willing to give it the kind of time that really could use, uh, that could be a baptism to town. So I think it's a good idea to kind of open it up and see what you get, what people would be interested in, let's see where it goes.
Is the highway super aware of this?
Yeah, I talked to him, he's really, he's swamped right now. Okay? That's my feeling.
Is there ever a time where there's like a, like a group of people that act as one? Do you know what I mean?
My, my, my comment on that is if you do, um, say we get something that is not a department head, the department heads should be as, I feel, should be assigned as deputies to assist, uh, in the operations, in the emergency and be part of the solution to get things done.
That makes sense. Yeah, you would have a question, uh, who would be, you know, running council?
I mean, the department heads could put a liaison in there, but you know, that's, uh, I, I do think they should be involved and I do think that when there's meetings involved, these department heads should know things are coming and what's to be expected and to gear up for.
Position is really, you know, a facilitator.
Right.
So it's really someone's gotta organize, get people together, organize like, like David said, just, you know, prior to, during, after, uh, so just put together. Is Chief Sidney aware of this discussion as well? Has he been a part of any of this?
He is. We, uh, had this discussion on Friday morning around 11:00 a.m., between 11:00 and 12:00 a.m. The fire chief was present, Randall was present, Jackie, uh, the lieutenant, Lieutenant Ian...
Sergeant, Sergeant Ian.
Sergeant Ian was, was present as well. Um, we were discussing the citizen, what's the name of the program?
Yeah, um, the CCAP program, which...
And we branched at that point to MIMA and the emergency management position that was on the agenda for this evening, so he is aware of it.
Okay. Can I say this in court as well?
Any questions from me, from anybody who's interested in or has questions from the Don, you're well aware of it?
No questions. Last chance. Any complaints about plowing, last chance.
Posting this, what, could you describe to me what you're looking for in posting this? When you say post, what do you mean?
Well, he, he's asked me to put some criteria together.
And then where are we gonna put it, Ed?
Uh, I'll look at it this week and, and give it to you and you can format it.
Okay. But are we just putting it on Facebook and on our website? We're just using free...
I would post it here. I wouldn't, I don't, I, I think that you post it here on the webpage. You're not, it's not a legal requirement, so point it in a paid position.
Just get the word out, I guess.
Okay.
Any other questions? While we have everybody here, open time for the public, uh, any questions? George?
Thank you.
Billy, are you running for this job?
I might be.
He's hiding back there. All right.
Nice to see you.
Hi, going back to...
I haven't seen you since retirement.
Just got back on vacation, right?
Yeah. How about you? I heard you were away.
All right, moving on to the minutes of the March 11th of Red Them. All right, um, those of, uh, do I have a motion to approve? That would be Ed or Jackie. Thanks, Don.
What's his last name? Slater? Name's okay.
See what badges on, people come in.
Right, hi, my name is?
Hi, my name is?
Good thing. Hmm. I just keep seeing him and I...
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minutes for...
March 11th.
March 11th, 2013.
14.
14.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
I have two.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion has passed, minutes approved. Um, next on the agenda is, we did the payrolls, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, ECAT contracts. And two sentences, Heather, where are we with that? They can be long sentences.
These two guys are sitting on the edge of their seat over there.
Are we okay? We're square?
Spoke with Kathy, had email from her insurance agent forwarded to everyone.
Yeah, I saw it.
For a description of difference between producers and broadcasters liability. Um, spoke with our insurance agent yesterday, Larry Joseph. Um, he was on board with one of the trains I thought we had last week, which was coming up with just a policy to clarify that anyone who works for the town is an official who wants to utilize the, essentially the ECAT program and have some of the equipment, tape any of the programs that we actually use ECAT themselves to broadcast, to produce, to do the whole shindig. Um, and if anyone wants to go outside of that, then they are doing so on their personal time and as a, um, individual capacity, not as an official, so that they're taking the liability on themselves.
So this evening, do we have to take a, a vote to sign the contract?
We do. We have not done that yet.
Okay. Um, it's been vetted by our attorneys and it's been bounced around for the past month. So I think it's, it's an appropriate time to ask for a motion to...
Uh, make a motion to sign the ECAT contract.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second with the approved changes.
With the approved changes.
Approved changes. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Page 10 of 10.
I have it right here. It's already got the signatures from ECAT. I want to get that one. Okay, Don, that's good.
Oh, the guy with the micrographia. Can you read that?
No.
You're nice. I'm being nice, I said, oh. Yours, thank you. All right, um, ECAT and then, uh, triple seven sixty-one A, uh, request for taking property out of sixty-one A. Heather, can you refresh us which piece of property this was?
Sure. This is the lots A, B, and C on the East Hurley side of Strong Road, assessors map twenty-nine, parcels fifty-two and fifty-three. It's a cross on the ball field.
Okay.
We, um, the board voted on this last week to approve it. I just did not have the paperwork. I wasn't aware that there was a sheet of paper that the board traditionally signs when releasing these chapter sixty-one A properties.
So we already voted on it? We don't have to vote on it?
We voted on it last week, we're all set. I just need three signatures from those who were present last week on this lovely sheet of paper, please.
Edward Batchholder has not been on the board since, um, Ann Roy was elected.
Oh, was I creating names?
Yeah, you're creating names.
Well, Ed, you know, I didn't like your last name, so I just changed it.
Do we sign this one or that one?
The one, the one right out there, 'cause it has more updates on it.
Probably. Yeah, Ed couldn't get off the board because we didn't post the election appropriately, so he was like stuck even though he was on it and then finally it was approved by the state and...
Well, when I, what I did was I actually found this on the hard drive somewhere and then I tried to just amend the names, but apparently when I saw Ed, I was all excited and figured that one was correct.
Told you there was a lot of Eds in town. All right.
Did you have a chance to meet him?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. It's possible, I've met a lot of people.
Now, do you wanna save executive session to the ends?
Whatever you'd like to do.
I think that would be appropriate, 'cause then we can just move through and go to executive session and when we come out, we'll just be closing. Uh, next up is possible form related to the town articles with Mr. Floyd.
Mr. Chairman, we created a information session last year. We held it on Thursday, May 9th, about a week and a half before the annual town meeting. Opened it to the public, told everyone there's no voting of any kind and we had two selectmen present, Jackie and Mike, uh, to go over each article at a time for the public. Public present could ask questions. It gave information to the public that could be shared and also it gave the authors of those articles something to think about that maybe they hadn't thought about to be better prepared at the annual town meeting.
When, when do you propose to do this?
Uh, May 8th, which is the same Thursday differently, May 8th, Thursday here, uh, six-thirty, seven, uh, six-thirty, we did it last year at six-thirty, seemed to work.
So could, did you pick that up on the mic over there? Can you hear what it's saying?
Yeah. The, and also we had Hank Barton speak about the master plan. Uh, he gave a presentation, so if there's any special presentations for any of the articles, they're certainly invited to be there.
Well, as I know, I don't think we've really generated any articles at this, at this time, so, um, if there are, you know, different departments that generate articles, we should just, uh, refer them to you to, to make arrangements to be at this...
Yeah, it's good to keep me in the loop and, um...
We'll have Heather do that for us, for us, if that's possible.
And then this way, whatever the articles are, they can be passed out and postponed.
So Robert, you go over the ominous budgets too at the same time, don't you?
We do, I don't remember what we did last year, there wasn't many questions on there. Yeah.
All right.
And not everybody's there to answer the questions and pretty much everybody knows that, but it's more the other articles of, you know, a particular substance. And if we don't know, if somebody's not there, then, you know...
Okay. Well, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, next on the agenda is, um, performance review of the accountant, Vicki Morrow. And, um, just before that, I just wanna touch on a few calendar things. Um, we're having a budget meeting next week that starts at six, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, it's a joint meeting with the select board and finance committee regarding the budget for FY15. So it's at 6:00 P.M. here next Tuesday instead of six-thirty.
Is that an appropriate time? So I'm speaking as mom of child in school and lots of moms say, you know, we wanna be involved, we wanna hear what's going on, we wanna know our, you know, where the money's going. Is this an appropriate time for those people who may be interested to come and listen? Or is that not an appropriate time?
That would defer that to a mother of children.
Well, I'm only, I'm, well, I mean, if moms have time to get here, then they have time to get here, but I'm just wondering if that's the time for them to come and hear what's happening.
Is this the, um, the, the, uh, finance committee annual report of the proposed budget?
No, not Tuesday. This is the...
This is just an update.
Right, I think it's a lot... Sitting down with the finance committee to make cuts on the budget. Right, and this is, we have a lot of moms wondering about school budget and where, you know, as far as school is concerned, and so I wanna be able to say, you know, this would be a good time for you to come if you have concerns about the budget.
Well, they're open meetings, they're, you know, if they have concerns, they should be here and, and it's a good time anytime.
Okay.
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But there is a, finance committee does have a all-boards meeting and when they do their presentation, and that's another time that can be important, 'cause they, I'm assuming they're gonna have it.
So that's one, that's one time, and I, and Liz, I don't have an answer. I mean, I don't know if you're talking like a Saturday or something.
No, no, I'm just talking, I mean, you know, sometimes, you know, moms are talking like, where's the money for school go? Who's in charge of that? Where's the money that...
School committee.
Like specifics.
Right, but if we're gonna cut the budget for school, they wanna know where you're gonna cut it.
Right.
If we're gonna tell the school where you need to cut so much money, and so they're gonna wanna know, well, why are we cutting the school and why can't you cut this or that kind of?
I don't know that anybody's gonna show up, I just know there's a PTO meeting Thursday, so someone might ask.
If, if you find that this is a more appropriate time, that we, I mean, it's a flexible thing, we can make it on another time. But moving ahead...
And was it this?
Last year.
Right, that's, you know what I'm getting at? Okay, thanks.
I mean, I think it's appropriate that they can...
Anytime.
Any, any of these meetings and, and especially if it's a public forum, they should be able to, uh, you know, be recognizing what their comments are.
Moving on, Slipwood meets on the 22nd of April and the 29th. The annual town elections are May 5th and, uh, Angel Park Memorial, that crossroads runs a dedication.
May 4th, a Sunday at 12:00 P.M.
May 4th. In addition to this, tentatively, there is, um, in the works, um, to put together a debate and meet the candidate night, um, working on moderator from out of town to, uh, to oversee that, and that would be tentatively, um, April 30th at 6:00 P.M. at Norris. If we can get everything pulled together, it's a kind of a last minute thing, but I think it would be important for people to come out and be able to talk to the candidates. And again, that's, uh, did you were able to talk to Norris?
I didn't ask, they're in the middle of audit, so I will ask in the morning.
All right, so...
I don't foresee it being a problem.
Yeah, I mean, if everything lines up and everything goes smoothly, uh, the council on aging has been gracious enough to be the sponsors of this, um, debate, um, meet the candidates night, um, April 30th at 6:00 P.M. at Norris School.
Have you reached out to all the candidates yet or not?
Not yet, no, it's, it's still being formulated together. Um, I think there'll be a formal reaching out to the different candidates, but I just wanna let the people know about it. And I have made contact with somebody that's willing to moderate, um, the event. Uh, from my understanding, he's the Greenfield High School debate coach. Um, they did call Nor- uh, excuse me, the regional, and they, I guess they don't have a, a full-time debate team, they have a debate class, but didn't have somebody who was like a debate coach, which I thought was we'd bring somebody outside from the town. Anyway, so that's the tentative for that. All right, um, moving backwards to, uh, performance review of accountant Vicki Morrow.
So, um, I have one question. I don't know that I have everybody's information.
You should have everyone's, I emailed you, everyone might did not submit one that we know of.
Okay, so that's the one that I'm...
Yes.
Do you have, do you have Jackie's?
Yes, I handed it to you.
Yeah, I thought that was me.
Jackie's here?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, gotcha. I thought that was me and Mike, because I knew he wouldn't be here, so, okay.
All right, now, do we have copies of that? Because I don't have copies of the...
You have it on your iPad. It's under performance reviews.
Here's three, four copies.
Okay. How you doing, Vicki?
I'm good, how are you?
All right. We have a chance to look at some of the reviews?
I did.
And do you have any questions?
I guess I don't have any questions about, um, what's contained in that.
Okay.
Um, I guess I would ask you, um, you know, going forward, what, what expectations, what is it that you would like to see continue? What would you like to see improve? Um, 'cause there's always room for improvement, you know, and all that stuff.
My comment, you saw that, uh, after the annual auditors' report, and, um, I know this past year, you and Don did a lot of those implication of those new changes, I'd like just to see them, you know, done faster and department heads more involved of why they're being done, how they're gonna be done and, and get those changes done sooner and later.
Liz?
I have, I just have, one thing that I don't know if this is something that Vicki can help with or not is, um, so after being, gone through this whole year on the board and I get, you know, we get the bill warrants and I kinda, I like to look at them first. Is there any way that, they come from your office to us, right? Is that how that goes?
Yeah.
To get them earlier? Is that some, a process that we can work on that we can look at them before they get here? Do you know what I'm saying? Like...
Well, I mean, Joyce leaves usually around 1:00 unless there's problems or issues and she'll, she'll finish them so that you can have them for tonight.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, they're done usually by 2:00. I mean, we have, you know, she's usually brought them into town administrator's office for them to present to you. So, they're in that office.
There's not a way to see them before they get paid though, right?
They don't get paid until Donna actually cuts the check.
Do we sign them?
Until after we sign it.
Correct.
That's the, that's a process that I would like to figure out how I can be more in tune to what's there. You know, I've come up in the past and asked for bills to see, you know, and I wish I had seen them before I signed.
Before you sign.
Yeah. Yeah, that kind of thing.
Um...
I don't, I don't know if that's something that can be improved on or not. Just a concern that I have.
I guess that's the tough one. I mean, you know, anyone's welcome to come up and look at them while we're in the middle of processing them, but I don't know that I can actually physically get them to you while we're trying to balance it.
Yeah. Something to think about, I guess.
Yeah.
That's all. Something to think about.
But on her note, they're usually available after 2:00.
Right. So, I could just pop in and look at it.
So, I mean, they can be reviewed. And you're looking to review everything.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Usually it's 1:00 or 1:15 or the children will downstairs.
But that's good to know the time.
Yeah.
So that I, when I'm done, when I get here.
When you get here.
I could look at them.
You could look at them, yeah. And if you had a question or a problem or something that you weren't sure, should we pay, should we not pay, you can come upstairs and, you know, we can look at that and make adjustments.
Okay.
Another thought that I have is, as, as the budget is produced and set up and as, as department heads and committees go through their budgets, I know there's nothing in place right now to, other than the actual report. But is there anything that we can do as a tool, not as a stick, as a tool to help the departments realize that, you know, they're running out of money, they need to have a plan, they need to address this? And is this something that your office can do to, you know, at least have a one-on-one with department heads and talk about their finances before they become a major issue for the town?
Yeah, that can be done. I mean, I had last year partially went through the payroll and sent emails to the department that said, look, based on these calculations, this is what you're going to be over. I didn't necessarily do that with expenses. That's a little bit harder to project than salaries. But that is definitely well and good to say, hey, you know, can you meet with me? I'm kind of concerned. You only have so much money left. You know, it would probably be maybe even before this, like, March timeframe.
Well, I think it would be good for the Finance Committee to, you know, to position themselves and also, like you, to position themselves. And also give the department heads warning that, hey, this is the money you have to live with because if there's no other money to, you know, to come in and augment that, you know, we're going to have deficits that we might not be able to match.
You know how we...
And that's why I'm saying that we should, if we have some kind of a tool, namely, the accountant's office to say, just review once, maybe once a month after six months goes by and say, hey, listen, Highway Department, come in. You've got X amount of money. Are you going to be all right? If you're not, you need to talk to somebody.
But isn't that in the line items? Because you look at the line items and every quarter, we used to get this all the time. You would see that after the first quarter, 25% spent, second quarter, 50%. I mean, we don't see that anymore. We used to get those reports all the time. And then we could see in October, December, where somebody's cruising over like a payroll line, that is now they're, they're getting close to 80%, 90%. And it's on November, we know they're going to go over. So, you know, we don't get that.
Well, on the 15th of every month, right?
We should, we should have an action plan.
The 15th and the 30th, we get them.
Do you not get them?
I haven't even seen them anymore.
They go out on the 15th and 30th, but...
Well, we don't see them here anymore. I used to look at them here. I don't see them.
Okay. Well, I mean, what has been done previously is Joyce will send those out. Sometimes they're not exactly in the 15th and 30th because we're, we know that there is a bill warrant that's going to be posted. So, we wait until the bill warrant's posted, if it's one or two days, or receipts for revenues to be posted. So, that way, you have a truer picture of what's in there. And it's been sent to the email selection. So, I can send them individually to you if you'd like.
Well, we usually have them here. It'd be like in our packet. We just look at them. I would just be like, it's something as we're talking about, somehow be sort of listening and looking at the same time just to see where we're trending, especially in years past when we would get, you know, 8% or 7% budget cut halfway through the year from the state because everything was bad back in 2009. You had to sort of really be prepared. But we don't get that sort of, that document to sort of, sort of see how things are going. And it brings up another discussion. And I think we talked about this, and I don't know if we ever got an action plan on it, was every year in February, certain departments ask for transfer of funds. Every year.
Correct.
And it's not transfer of funds because something broke. It wasn't transfer of funds because something flooded. There's always transfer of funds for basic budgetary items. And I really wanted to look at that for the past five years because if a department head is doing the same thing every single year, skirting around the budget process of, I mean, of what we go through every, every spring to just ask for more money later, then we have to look at that person's budget and see if it's truly funded up to where it needs to be funded. Because that money should be used for emergencies, not for yearly expected budgetary expenses, which it is being used for now.
I did start that. I haven't finished it. I started doing it when we talked about it however many months ago and other things came up and whatnot. I can definitely finish that. What I can tell you is that the Finance Committee has gotten a little more stricter and stringent on, this isn't an emergency expense. You went over your budget, you've got to figure out a way to pay for it. Because they won't make those transfers if it's for copy paper because you spent your budget.
Some of these were just for wages from...
Most of those, in what you're referencing, was for wages in particular, yes. To fund their, their, they went over their wage line. So, but as far as expenses go, you know, Finance Committee will definitely look at that and say, look, this isn't an extreme situation. It's not something that broke that you need the money for, you know, really shouldn't be transferring to pay for, like I said, copy paper, just using that as an example. They don't tend to do that. They haven't in the past, you know, year or so for, you know, for specific everyday items that people just overspent. You know, if there was a reason they overspent because of an extreme situation, but that wasn't, but that wasn't told, I shouldn't say extreme, but unexpected expense. And that wasn't told to them, and people are trying to pay regular bills, they're going to, they don't know that, so they're going to say, no, I'm not going to pay these regular bills. So, I've seen that happen in the past year or so.
But I just, I'm concerned that in the, as the budgetary process goes through, it's a lie. It's basically a lie. It's not factual information because...
Yes.
It's not truly reflecting what they need for a year. It's what they need for seven-eighths of a year or whatever. And so, you know, that comes back to us. Will we not funding that department effectively?
Mm-hmm.
Or is that department not managed effectively?
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, so it's a couple of things. So, it's a bigger picture thing that I think we need to look at, especially, there's never been any money in this town since 2004. Every year, there's no money. There's just no money. And so, I think we really have to be very, you know, aware of the things that are sort of, are happening to sort of not address issues by sort of putting it off for the following year for it to take a transfer.
Is it fair to say that when you get that, when we get that report, Vicki, you know, during the month and the first three months, you would say you've expended 25...
You're talking the expense report?
Yeah. You've expended 25%. And by the middle of the fiscal year, you should have expended 50%. Is there a way for us to kind of monitor that with an email or a letter to the department that says, hey, you're halfway through the year and you're actually 75% over? Like, kind of, maybe they're not looking at it. Maybe they're not really paying close attention. So, if we had some sort of documentation out of your office that just brought it to their attention, maybe that's, maybe that would be helpful in eliminating getting to February.
Well, I think the biggest one is wages. Because I think, you know, there are certain things that get paid by fees. So, all of a sudden, it's like 50% gets paid in the first quarter, and then the other 50% gets paid the fourth quarter.
And I'm sure, you know, and I'm sure that Vicki would know by looking at it, you know, that's what this is and it will catch itself up.
Right.
But the paper part of it, that kind of stuff, maybe...
I think it'd be easier just to start with wages because that's where your biggest expense is and would have the most effect on the economy of the town.
But no, that's a good idea too, to say, look, you know, I mean, that's something as a department head, that's, that's ultimately in your job description and your responsibility. But to send a reminder is by all means a good, you know, way to just...
Monitor.
Monitor it, yeah.
Yeah. Gotcha. Not going.
Well, on a different note, I, you know, from my opinion, I don't have any complaints about how the accountant office has been running. I think you're doing a very good job upstairs. You've been here, what, two and a half years now?
Um, obviously, 2012 is when I started.
Yeah, so...
Year and a half.
So, it's been a year and a half.
Year and a half. Year and a half. It's been a good year and a half, right?
It's been a good year and a half. There's lots left to learn, but, you know, I did learn a lot while I was here, so...
What I would like to talk about is the relationship with one department, with the rest of the town and, and other departments, and how you take on how the accountant, accounting department or the accountants department relates to, say, other departments in the town and how those relationships are. Are they healthy relationships, do you think?
I think the majority of them are.
Yes.
So, you think things are going relatively well in those areas?
I believe so.
Okay. Are there any areas that we could help make the relationship stronger, healthier?
Um, I guess what I would ask is that, you know, there are certain guidelines and certain deadlines and certain, and I want to call them policies because they're more procedure and processing that we do in our office, that I would need to make sure that you guys are going to, are going to back me up, so to speak. Like, if I say that I need, you know, all people's bills for year end at this date, I can't be having people sending me, you know, wait back a second. Like, I'll send out a memo very shortly about year-end dates and what I need to do to close the books. And I need people to take that seriously and not say, oh, why didn't you turn it in in September anyway? Because that means the longer it takes me to close the books, the longer it takes me to certify free cash, the longer it takes for the town to have extra money to do something with.
Do you think it would be beneficial if you sign that letter and you have us sign it too?
That would be helpful, yes. You know, because at certain points in time, you know, I'm going to ask for bills that, that you are going to anticipate that you're going to need to pay in July. You know, I don't expect people to, going out on June 30th and spending all the rest of their budget because I'm not going to get the bills in time. You know, that kind of thing. You know, last year, for instance, what, what you do at year end is any bills that are related to the year before you accrue them, so the expenses are in the correct month. You know, I had a stack of bills I was accruing for year end that were from the previous August and September and November and, you know, in February and March and whatnot. And so, that just takes a lot longer process to close the books. So, if people are taking it seriously and that, you know, we really need to meet these deadlines, and I'm not doing it to be a pain, but if we want to close the books and get our free cash by the end of September or early October, then we need to make sure that, that nothing gets left behind.
Can Heather help? Can Heather help with that? Sort of, there's a, is there certain one or two there need help with addressing the urgency of that? Can Heather be, be somebody that can help you with that or...
She can, but I think if, if you as a board say, you know what, the accountant's office needs these particular things to be done in a timely manner, you know, whatever the deadlines are that are there, then that would help a lot, I believe.
The letter could come from you and us.
Yes.
I think that would be helpful.
Yes. I think that would be helpful.
Can you generate a list of things that you were expecting at a certain time? That's fair.
Yeah. I mean, I, I sent one out last year, you know, because if we're going to, for instance, do our, you know, year-end budget transfers closer to, earlier than July 15th, then, you know, I need to make sure I have those bills before that sort of time so I know whether your budget line is going to go over and we have money to transfer from one account to the other, that type of thing. Does that make sense to you guys?
And I apologize to anybody that might take this wrong, but, I mean, I've been here for 30 years. I know a lot of the terminology, but there's a lot of terminology out there, a lot of new departments are not familiar with.
That's a good point.
Like, like incumbenting funds. You need to have a definition with that. Bills that come in before the 31st is considered a bill for this year.
Correct.
Anything after the 31st is not this year's bill.
Correct.
And don't submit it. These are things.
Yeah.
And if there's money in the budget and you've got some, say, $200 or $300 left, doesn't mean you spend it for the sake of spending it.
No. That and do it at the last minute.
Right.
Because that, you're not going to get a bill till the end of July or later or whatnot and it kind of...
But incumbenting means, and I know we've had these difficulties from department heads, they think that money's there, they can, they can spend it all through the summer, but no, that means that you have a bill coming...
They have a kind of physical bill.
That you don't have a bill for yet, but you bought it before the 31st of June or 30th of June. And you anticipate it. So, that money has to be incumbented on the books to pay for.
Right. I have to set it aside, say, okay, we know we spent this last year. It's not going to fall into the free cash.
Oh, I just, if you can give some definitions out there for those titles would be helpful.
That's a good point.
Maybe you could have a meeting with some of the department heads with Heather, set up with some guidelines, if that would be something to do.
We talked about that at our last department head meeting last week and so then the next one. Or we could have one sooner than that and, you know, send a memo out and then people can, at that department head meeting, say, you know, I'm not quite sure, I understand what you mean by this, you know, be able to elaborate. And I can bring examples of what those...
I think the fact that you're having the department head meetings as opposed to not having them last year, it will help substantially with the problem that you're saying because there's the communication part that perhaps was missing before.
That, and I think too, the committees kind of get, you know, you get the historical committee or the park commissioner or something where they get bills and they just submit them like they normally would submit them, not realizing that, you know, it's an electric bill that was really for June and they get it in July, meaning those types of things. So, even if you, you know...
And a lot of those bills are split months.
No, that's just an example. Exactly.
And bills out in July.
Exactly.
Vicki, I think Jackie has a question.
Yes, I was, this of course is our job, but I was just wondering if you could, the Hampshire Council of Governments, as you know, have been involved in our electrical bills. And it came across, it came to my attention, actually it was a letter written to Ed about the Department of Utilities, how they had some changes. And so I started paying attention and I should have before, my mistake, but I noticed the power, our rates were very high because they had a fixed rate. And things started to change and they got very expensive. So I'm aware of it, Heather and I have worked on it, we're looking at other contractors to help us with that. But could you please, in the future, if you see anything that seems really high, draw it to our attention? Although I know we should be looking at it, but it'd be great if, you know, you maybe saw a spike in a bill that was unusual and just draw it to our attention.
Okay, that's easy enough because I'll see it before you guys.
Right, right.
So...
Right, so that, you know, because by now, it was too late and now we've gone back to Western Mass Electric. But if we had earlier caught it when it just began, we could have pulled away again. Because it only took two weeks to actually go back to Western Mass.
Okay.
Thank you.
Easy enough.
Any other issues with inter-department relations or anything like that?
I mean, I don't have any at this point in time. You know, we try to cooperate with people the best that we can. It doesn't always work that way, but, you know, we can only do what we can do, give people the information that they're requesting and trying to help them understand the information that they get there.
A lot of times they don't understand the information. Would you, with reasons?
Would you want your sister to work here?
I want my sister to work here?
Well, is this the kind of company that you would want?
No, because she's bossy.
Okay.
My sister didn't, but she's a bossy woman and that is fair well for her.
She wants... No, I'm not, maybe that's, I'm just saying, would you want a relative to work here or a friend? Would you say, "Oh yeah, I work for our town out of Southampton"?
Well, I tried to get my friend who went on maternity leave to come here, but she liked her summers off because she was a teacher, so.
So you have faith in the town, then?
I do, otherwise I wouldn't be here. Because I, you know, it's partly why I took this job and I like what I'm doing and I like, you know, being able to understand how it all works and know where my taxes or dollars are going and being able to help people that live here get the best bang for the bucks, so to speak, you know, and make sure everything's getting accounted in the right places.
Now, you asked us, is there anything that you should be doing? Is there anything that you, as an accountant that's been here for a year and a half, see that we're not doing that we should probably think about doing or anything?
I guess, you know, going back to talking about, you know, whether it be our own, our own internal deadlines with payroll or bills or asking for certain documentation, you know, we do that so we know where the money's going. And so then when the auditors get here, they have a warm and fuzzy of what's happened. You know, like, for instance, they came to me with some bills and their pay, their, they did their sample testing of bills that we've paid. And they'll be like, "Whose signature is this? Whose signature is this?" And I'm like, "I don't really know." You know, it's one of the library trustees. So I can kind of make it out, but not really. So when we say, you know, "We really can't read the signature," it's not like we're trying to be a pain in the butt, it's because they asked us those questions.
Can you get a signature, do you want a signature page from each department?
Um...
You know, everyone in the department signs something?
No, because for the most part, we can figure it out, but it was something that happened, you know, when I first got here. Because when I came in August, it was still, it was the beginning of '13. So at the beginning of '13, I really wasn't into the whole FY13 piece yet, you know. So those types of things I'm learning as I go along. But I think once we get updated members of each committee, you know, because we're gonna have elections, you know, if your office puts together a list of all the members and who they are, then you can kind of decipher for the most part. But that's just an example of, you know, certain, certain things that the auditors bring up.
What, do you have 12 trustees at the library?
Yeah, that was just an example, you know, I mean...
Is it your wife?
You know, like, the zoning board signed off on payroll and it's just, this makes for, like, I don't know, I wouldn't know who that was, but Joyce did. But it's just the script. So the auditors would say, "Well, who signed this?" And so they're looking for that authenticity of that somebody actually, a real person actually physically approved, whether it be a bill or payroll or something.
But sometimes when I'll sign something, then I'll put a slash and I'll write my name on it. So, especially in the hospital, I'm only in the hospital for some, one or two things, and the nurses may not recognize my signature. I'll actually, we used to have stamps, we'd stamp our name.
It's just an example of something, I guess, that, you know, in going, starting this new audit for this FY13, you know, those are the types of things that they look for. And it makes a lot easier if everything that they're looking for is all together in one place.
All right, one last question for you. Do you have any other questions?
Oh, I thought you said you had one last.
No, 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 one question for you. Do you have any other questions for us?
We don't at this time. I mean, I guess I just want to be able to, if I need something, call you, get your support. You know, I may come in here from time to time and give you information, updates, like, I'll give you an example of when I was getting free cash certified and I thought there was gonna be a lot less. For as much as, you know, thank God it was incorrect based on the calculation I had in my spreadsheet, but because we ended up with more, I had to be able to come to you and tell you that information. So I'm gonna continue to do that and I want you to be able to, you know, tell Heather or call me and say, "Hey, can you come and present certain numbers to us for certain ideas or certain things?" You know, I want to be able to continue that relationship.
As long as you're doing it in a timely manner. In other words, she needs to know this to put it on.
Oh, yeah, I realize that, yeah, yeah, yeah. But, you know, it won't be anything that would be a surprise. For instance, if it had to do with, for instance, free cash or the tax rate or the Schedule A or some other type of issue that, you know, has come up, so.
We've been meeting at time frame spots for Schedule A and stuff like that.
Yeah, actually, the DOR is just going over Schedule A this past month. It was submitted in the end of November. And tax rates were done for the past few years on time. And, you know, I've been trying to get, I mean, the auditors the information that they need at a time limit now. But if you don't feel that something's not done in the time limit, then you have to come and tell me, "Hey, you know, maybe we could do better in getting this in or whatnot, whatever it might be."
Very good. Well, thank you, Vicky.
Wait, I'm not done. If there was something else to say. So I, this is the first time we used this form as a way...
I was gonna ask Art this, but go ahead.
Well, actually, I just wanted to talk about number 11, which is the last one in individual goal, because if we're gonna review somebody, I think that that, I think everybody should have a goal going forward into the next year. And I think it's our responsibility as the board of selectmen to make sure that we have a goal and that we follow through with it. And so I actually called Vicky this morning because I thought that that was the one part of this that maybe needed to be a conversation instead of, you know, I could come up with a goal for whoever I'm reviewing and there could be five different goals, but it needed, I think it needs to be an effort together. And so Vicky had talked about obtaining, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the name of it, the Municipal Accounting Certificate.
Yeah, it's the Municipal Accounting Certificate.
So I just thought that that was a good goal worth noting and something that she was going to try and achieve going forward within the next year. And we should check in regularly to see, right, to see where she's at and how we can help you to get, get that or whatever we need to do to move it along. I thought, I thought it was a good measurable goal.
Yeah, basically, in March, they have the Mass Municipal Auditors and Accountants Association yearly school. And at that school, you go through a bunch of classes, you know, to give you updates and you can ask questions and they go through, there's level one, two, three, and four. And the last level, you take the test at the end. And basically, what you're doing is handwriting journal entries of where all the, you know, someone were to, if they give you an example of, you know, you want to record real estate taxes, what, you know, you have to write down all the accounts that you do. Most, I would say probably all of you, it's have an accounting software program that does half that entry for you. So I only need to do half, but for the test, you need to know the whole thing. So it's a case of me really sitting down and if I'm gonna do an entry, make sure I do it all by hand. So I know exactly where it goes. And it just takes time to do that. I think, you know, I think maybe in another year, there's a few classes you can take and that's all they do, like for six weeks, once a week, that's all you do, sit there and do those types of journal entries. But that was good.
Yeah, I think that's a good goal.
I thought about, you know, I definitely want to do that, so.
Well, the question I was gonna ask is, with Art sitting there, how did you think about the process we went through tonight? This is the first time we use this format.
I thought it was quite good.
Is there anything we could have done better?
I don't think so. I'm just hoping that all department heads will go through the same process.
Is it advisable to open them to the public for questions, advice?
I think it's difficult, very difficult to do it in, to do this in open, in open meetings. Heather tells me in the Ethics Committee or the Ethics Commission says that's the way you gotta do it. I think that they, the department heads report to you. So you give the evaluation. I don't think the public should give an evaluation. Again, you're their employer, so that's the way I would look at it.
Wouldn't it be advisable to query written questions or comments?
I think that's always, that's always a good thing. I'm just afraid it can get out of hand.
I hear you as well.
You know, that's, that's the only thing. Nothing against the public because I am definitely part of the public, but you, you're the ones that are evaluating and that person reports to you and you can hire and fire, you've got that capability.
Excellent. Anthony, last comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I think we have to schedule a time to sit down and do contract negotiations at some point. And I think it would be up to Heather to squeeze that into our timeframe coming up.
We'll talk.
All right. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on. I think we're, I think we've done everything we're gonna do in open meeting.
Town administrator's report.
Ah, crap.
You and Mike always skip me. It's a show report this week, I've been very swamped.
Yes, Heather.
All right, so just a couple things. Earlier today, Norris School Roof was a topic of discussion. Ed, myself, Randall and the janitors that over at Norris had the opportunity to hang out at Norris School for a little bit and talk about the roofing. Apparently a gentleman from Greenwood visited earlier. And after our meeting, we came to the determination that it would be an opportune moment to have the superintendent schedule a meeting with the Reinhardt, who is the Ed...
Architect.
Architect and Tishman, who is the...
Project manager.
Project manager. And Ed, myself, Craig, the janitors, and Randall, and sit down and have a discussion about what's actually happening with the roof, where it's going, why there's still problems with it and figure out what's going to happen going forward.
Is this the old problem, right?
No, it's new problems.
This isn't the same change order?
No, we don't have a change order. There is a change order, an outstanding change order they couldn't do because winter set in, which is part of the problem. But there are some other problems with drainage, drains on top of the roof that we've had issues with. And it's all part of construction. They're, for the most part, new things, they need to be identified. The roofer is basically saying, "Those are not ours, we weren't told to do these and they weren't on the plans, but now we're gonna sort them out."
So then, I guess I'm thinking in terms of cost at dollars. Would those require another change order?
Well, we have to identify. If they're a problem of the original contract and they're part of the original contracts and current change orders, there is no additional money as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
If there are problems that the roof has not efficiently addressed the drainage off the roof and they weren't on the plans, we might have some change orders.
Okay.
Okay?
We're just thinking about borrowing the money?
Oh, we're not talking big money. I think you've already borrowed more than enough.
But, yeah, you have to redefine things that, don't you? Yeah, so. And I'm working with Mark from Tishman on the reimbursement.
Yeah, well, we're also talking about not releasing the retainage until he's a result.
There's about $78,000 that we still owe them.
Seventeen?
Eight thousand, oh, and that includes the $8,000.
Well, we have retainage on the architect, the engineer, the architect, the project manager and the...
Yeah, there's $2,800 left for Reinhardt for a closeout. And then Greenwood, there's about $78,000 that we still owe them.
That's about right, that's a 5% change.
Follow up from last week, Route 10 DOT sidewalk project. German Naito, who's the head of this project down at DOT, gave me a call earlier this week. He's back in town. We have set up a public meeting on May 29th at 7:00 PM over at Norris School in the cafeteria.
What time?
7:00 PM, which I was told by the secretary, it's actually, she called it the cafeteria. So I was a little confused.
That's where we have our meetings.
Huh. But I'm used to a cafeteria, I've never heard of the cafeteria, so.
Well, it's where they play basketball and eat cheese sandwiches, right?
Sounds exciting. We just wanted to provide...
They have the stage there.
We wanted to provide enough space so that folks could come and we could accommodate more people than this room holds, should we actually get a crowd.
May 29th at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock, yes. I will put it on Facebook, the website, et cetera. They have to advertise it, they have to send information to everyone.
Is that a Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
It says it's a Thursday. All right, staffing. We had a staff meeting last week on Thursday morning.
Yeah.
And one of the things that came up, as Vicky had already stated, was we always, I always ask for the input of the other department heads, if there's anything that is going on in the department that they want to make folks aware of. So one thing that came up was we talked about the audit, the current status of the audit. And we also discussed what was gonna be needed from everyone as we got to year end. So Vicky had mentioned to everyone and reminded folks that she was gonna send out a memo shortly with regards to the bills. After that meeting, we had our first public safety meeting. We will continue to have these monthly after our regular meeting. And at that point, we talked a little bit about the emergency management plan. That's where our topic of discussion went for this week's meeting. All right, other things, other staffing issues, some jobs that are out there. The building commissioner position, I have been working with Richard in actually scripting this position as I was given the way to do last week. It will be going before the PC, PQB, I'll never get that right.
PB, PB.
The Triple PB Board tomorrow for approval. Once we get approval from that, there's a couple of different sites that affiliated with building commissioners that we're gonna put it on as well, as well as advertising the newspaper, whatever we need to do to comply with all the regs. Essentially, we're looking for someone who already has a lot of the qualifications and the training so that they're ready to go. The problem, again, with this position is they also have to be approved by Boston. Other positions that are out there, we have the Board of Health slash the Building Commissioners Clerical Assistant. So that position will also be before the Triple PB Board tomorrow.
Just a point of clarification, is he a building inspector or commissioner?
Commissioner.
He is the Building Commissioner slash Zoning Enforcement Officer.
When did he become commissioner?
The state changed the terminology.
It's required by the state, Mass General Laws, for him to be the Building Commissioner.
But he needs to be a commissioner and wholly of course, what he did here as an inspector at some point.
You have to have a commissioner and you have inspectors underneath him.
What they found when they had the regional building commissioner was that the person actually essentially ran out of energy going from one end to, you know, the county to the next end of the county and was never on site when they needed to be if they had emergency calls. So I've been told. And then as far as the administrative assistant position, it is going for the Triple PB Board tomorrow for the, essentially just accepting the vacancy position at the time being. I'm still working on the job description. So I will continue to work on that this week. Some other things, let's see, I, also at the last meeting, I updated everyone on the Triple PB's personnel review form that we used this evening and let them know that that was the wish of the board last week that we start implementing use of such forms. Updated everyone on the update on the security codes. All of the security codes have now been updated throughout the entire building over here, haven't touched the COA. Apparently, there were many that hadn't been used in a while and instead of using our numbers sequentially all the way up, we had lost track at some point of our list. So we had just randomly guessed a number and plugged in people. So that is now all up to date. Let's see, other things. We talked about the joint budget, finance and board of selectmen meeting next week. In May, I met with the public, let's see, what's his name, Charlie Knickie from the Public Safety Complex? Thank you. And he asked if we could do a joint meeting with, with his committee and finance and this board in May, May 6th, actually, just to talk about where they are with, you know, where they're going, going forward with money, what they're gonna need for the next steps, what have you. They did their perk tests this week, two tests, they both passed, everything was good. I believe it said something, now Ed, you're gonna have to correct me on this one. I think it was something like it took 10 minutes for the...
Oh, yeah.
10 minutes for...
10, 10, flows.
10 minutes for what?
Flows.
10 minute flows, yes. I don't speak that language.
It drains out in 10 minutes.
But apparently it was a good result, is what I was told. So they were very happy. And as far as Maples, is this Maple Road or Maple Street?
Maple Street.
Maple Street goes underneath us. As we had previously found out, the town had voted at annual town meeting or special town meeting, one or the other, back in 1947, to discontinue the road. The problem was the town didn't have the authority to do so. It's not a town road, it's a county road. So there was a hearing to discontinue the road officially after a viewing of the road at the beginning of May. I will get you the dates on this one.
This is HCOG is gonna be?
This is HCOG, yes. So unfortunately, it does cost us a little bit of money on this one because we have to furnish the...
Donuts?
The what?
You say donuts?
No, furnish the...
Layout.
Mylars, mylars for this. But it's coming out of the Public Safety Complex Committee's fund.
Mylars should be in their files.
That's a good point. I will look into that.
They are in their files.
Check files.
All county roads are in HCOG's possession.
Okay.
We might have copies here, but I don't have mylars here.
Okay. I will see what we can find out. And otherwise, that's, that's all I have on my report.
Thank you very much, Heather. So now, last chance for open time for the public. I guess we're gonna go into executive session. Mass General Law Section 38, Section 21, Number 1, which is... What happened to the... I need the... Think it's supposed to read?
Hold on, they're waiting.
It looks like, it used to be a laminated piece of paper.
Yeah.
Here we go. Mass General Law's to... Chapter 38, Section 21, Number 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health of rather than professional competence of an individual and discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer or... and discuss discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, common employee, common staff member or individual." Uh, roll call, vote please.
Maltoni, Sierra.
Dugle.
Polly.